Thank you so much for joining us for our school district recap. This is a special edition. You'll notice by the way it's set up, by the way, the table is. But if you've been watching the school board meetings, you will have noticed them discussing the California Voting Rights Act. That's the CVRA. We're going to talk about what that means for everybody here in the city of Monrovia. So we've got some special guests. I'd like to introduce who is sitting at the table with me today. Marita Travanti, school board member. Thank you for being here, along with Jennifer Anderson, our school board president. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, appreciate you coming in for this conversation. And we've got Jason, who was a part of our school board recap team on the norm, was a parent here and who is aware of this space that we are navigating as parents as well. So in jumping right to it, I'd like to talk about kind of what this means for schools here in Monrovia. If we could kind of start from why we're moving from an at-large system to district-based and now and like what that means.
Yeah, first I want to start by saying thank you so much for this opportunity because it's always a challenge to get the messaging out to everyone in the community. Parents are typically engaged, staff is engaged, families are engaged, organizations that we work with in the community are engaged, but everybody outside of that kind of not paying attention exactly to what's going on in the school district. So thank you again for that opportunity. So just some historical information. This law, CVRA, that you referenced, was passed back in 2002 by Governor and signed into law by Governor Gray Davis. A lot of districts have moved into or cities and school districts have moved into that. We had not yet here in Monrovia. And so an attorney did reach out to us to move into districting. And so that's where we're at right now. When I say an attorney reached out to us, this is an attorney that's been doing this with a lot of school districts throughout the area. And some districts have fought it and have lost. And it's been taken all the way to the Supreme Court and so.
In fact, how many have won?
Zero have won. So a school district like us has to look at, are we going to spend money on attorney's fees and fight this? Or are we going to use those dollars for education, which is what we've been charged to do?
So this has been happening since 2002.
Yes, slowly, but surely, very slowly.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Throughout California, not here in Monrovia. That's been more recent.
So why did it take 22 years to finally arrive here? And it seems like now it's happening like super fast. So it's like 2002, we're here 2024, and now this all has to happen immediately?
Good question.
It is a good question. This is something that we would have preferred to have a longer span of time. But given the demand letter, we are charged with getting this done in this timeframe or we will be, legal action will be taken against us. And so in an effort to comply with the law and be as strong fiscal stewards of public dollars that we can, we are going to make every effort to make this happen.
So they, sorry, so they, in 2002, so that's how the state operates? So they won't notify you until 2024? You have to make it happen by the ninth hour? Or is there like some type of like, hey, this is coming up in a year or two or five?
No, there's a lot more to this. The background is that if you, and fact-check me if I have the wording wrong.
Okay.
But if there is any reason to believe that underrepresented groups are being suppressed in representation in school boards, in city councils, in all kinds of districts, that you need to establish a by-district.
And it was specific to brown and black. It was very specific. Those minority groups were underrepresented in areas of California. So the spirit of the law is good. It's just they made it one size fits all. And we have communities that do have, are represented well. I do feel like Monrovia has diverse governance teams.
Which is exactly why both the city of Monrovia and our school board haven't made that move because we have historically been very well represented by the multicultural population that we have in our town. And so the other aspect is, I think we all, all five of us, and actually, we would all have loved to have been here, but because of the Brown Act, there's only, we can only have two here.
Yes.
So we represent our whole five body of the school board, but we're only speaking on their behalf because they would be here if legally they could be. Now I lost my train of thought, but.
So maybe I can provide a little bit more context. So we call it a law. What it means is that the law provides an opportunity for those people who feel as though that their voting rights are being infringed upon. It is an extension of the federal voting rights law that happened, you know, decades prior to that. So it allows for anybody to then bring litigation against a city or a school board. It's any actually municipality. So this law does not explicitly apply towards school districts. This is, it's happening across the state of California. Over the last 10 years, there were, you've seen the vast majority of both municipalities, that means like cities and towns, as well as school districts, that have made this transition to this law for good, for well-intentioned reasons. The law talks about to prevent racial polarization and to prevent minority vote dilution. And that's the difference between the California Voters Rights Act because we're a minority-driven state, our population is minority. So we wanted to make sure that we were, that the minority vote was not being diluted. So it is really in good spirit. It is true historically, both on the city side and on the school board side, that we have had that. And it doesn't show, but in fact, the city was approached back in 2016 by a different attorney with, under the same law. And the city went back through Craig Steele, city attorney, and went back and showed that historically, Monrovia, the city of Monrovia's elections have not done that. So there is some wiggle room, but any school districts that have tried have not, with the exception of Santa Monica, Malibu, which is still in flux.
Still in litigation.
It's still in flux right now. But I mean, there are a lot of school districts that have literally lost millions and millions of dollars.
So the layman also would gather to say like, this is also an opportunity for an attorney or a legal thing to hustle a nice.
Chunk of change?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like it's just.
His name is Kevin Shinkman.
It is a cottage industry.
So there's a law here.
Cottage industry.
Right. So this is, this is like while the law is trying to do the right thing, hustle man who can be an attorney is able to make money here in this situation.
He's going to make $30,000.
Right.
I think it's, I think it's more than that now.
Well, yeah, I mean, just by filing the lawsuit.
But just by filing.
Just by filing the lawsuit, the district, even though they comply, will have to pay $30,000. And if they do not comply within a certain amount of time or provide a letter of intent in a certain amount of time, then further litigation. And if you lose, you pay all of his attorney fees.
I do feel like school districts are especially vulnerable because they know for every dollar that goes to an attorney or litigation is one less dollar that goes to education. And that's our, that's our goal, right? That is our ultimate responsibility is educating the children in Monrovia.
It's right out of the classroom.
Yeah.
So if we can just, for anyone watching right now, to understand better, at-large system versus district-based now, which is what we're moving towards. At-large is, correct me wherever, but this is, everybody can vote for their members.
Regardless of where you live in the city.
In the school board district.
In the school board district, right.
Okay.
So for example, we rotate every two years. We'll have either two seats up typically or three seats up. So when you go to vote, you can cast a vote for no more than two or no more than three. And you can choose from anyone who is running for that office.
Got it.
That will change when we move to by district. And you will be able to vote for anyone running from your district.
The district in which you live, not the district in which your.
Your child goes to.
If you do have a child of school age, you could live in a different trustee area or a district than where your.
And they can overlap.
Yes.
Right? And the schools can overlap multiple districts as well.
Sure, because we have elementary schools, middle schools, and then the high schools, the whole thing, so then there's.
But let's be clear, that doesn't change where you go to school.
Right, right, right.
That's a different matter.
Right.
This is just who you vote for, who you can vote for.
Right.
And I do want to mention this, Chris, because I think this is important. CVRA and districting, there are benefits to this. And that is if you live in a district that there is a seat that is up, you may have people that would run for that seat that maybe wouldn't step up to run to be on the school board because now your, the cost of your campaigning is much less.
Right.
If you're walking your neighborhood, it's a smaller neighborhood and maybe you can, you know, contact more people than going at large. So there are definitely some benefits to doing this.
As well as the fact that if you're, you know, going about your neighborhood, those are your neighbors, those are people that know you and know the people who are running probably better than reading a statement and relying only on that or maybe a public forum. They have experience with you. So they maybe end up being better informed, but there are some downsides too.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of the challenges might be the fact that there may not be somebody who has the time or the finances to be able to do that or the experience or knowledge or the interest. You know, I think that there is something to say for, I know that the city does a good job of reaching out and trying to encourage people that are of interest, learn how to do that. I think that's something that this board really needs to outreach and to talk about that. You don't, you do not have to be a member. You don't have to have somebody in school to be a board member. All you have to do is be a resident and it does, it makes a huge difference. You're talking going from 45,000 potential voters down to 9,800, right? And so it really does make a huge difference as long as people run.
Right.
And, and.
Because what happens when you have a district when nobody runs?
Right.
Then the board, the existing board can make the decision to either run a special election, which is.
Costly.
Costly. Or two, they appoint somebody until the next election.
Which prevents voters.
It circumvents the voter.
Right.
Well, and then also if one person runs, well, there's one thing if nobody runs.
Right.
But then there's if one person runs. We have, realistically, there are, you know, teams across the state of California that are working very, very actively to infiltrate school boards.
Yes.
And, and so.
I brought that point up in a school board meeting.
And I mean, you know, there are, they are political action committees that are working extremely hard to get people onto school boards that are working hard to limit rights of certain individuals, use of certain curriculum.
Ban books?
Teach banning books, talking about race, talking about gender, talking about LGBTQ rights, all those things. There are people that are actively doing that. So I put myself in my shoes, what if nobody else runs except the one person that wants to push that?
Yeah.
So what that means, and this is a bigger communication issue, is that how do we as a school board, school community, work collectively with the city, with the county, with our nonprofit organizations, our churches, our clubs? How do we get that word out? What is something that we can do to let people know it is not this daunting task that costs $30,000 to run for an election that.
Not in Monrovia.
Well, I mean, I mean, it does cost that.
In some places it does.
It does cost, you know.
Even here.
I mean, it costs 30, I mean, you talked to people that have run for a city, for, you know, for city offices and some past school board offices, and it costs thousands and thousands of dollars plus your time. So we need to do a really good job to make sure that our community understands the importance of electing.
In what you said too, so they're basically looking at like narcs kind of coming in and being appointed to run that lives, has a certain address and like infiltrate a board.
Chills, maybe.
Okay.
There's special interest, yeah.
Yeah, so they could find somebody here in Monrovia, hey, why don't you run?
It has happened to school districts not even that far from here.
Amazing.
And to politicize what is a nonpartisan role, right?
Right.
We do this out of the goodness of our heart and the benefit for our students. And I can say that, you know.
No hidden agendas.
Nope.
Right.
But when other people come in with specific agendas, with lots of money and power behind them, that's a scary and dangerous situation, I think, we could find. We have to be very cautious and aware.
And I think we have a, it's safe to say.
It impacts our teachers too.
It does. It really impacts our entire community.
You know, and the, you know, when you get, when you get strong, I mean, not to say that this is going to happen in Monrovia, but it does happen where we do have these groups that will identify people. They will literally search databases, use PDI, which is a, which is a metrics method in which you can measure voting and, you know, who's, you know, all these different things to get people elected. And it's happening. I mean, there's, there's literally.
Very sophisticated operations.
So I mean, and with that said too, like this is also an opportunity for me, what I see with PTSA groups that are organized, that can now find people that are active within the schools. I feel like if you're part of PTSA, you're already committed.
PTSA, school site councils.
Well, you're looking at two very good examples of people that were involved in their school community well before they were involved in the school board. So that's really what we want to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, take it to the next level.
Understand the importance of it.
Which we realistically need to like triple our people running from past elections.
Right.
Whether you're a parent or not, right? You can still be involved, maybe it's in the community or in whatever regard. You don't need, like you said earlier, you don't need to be a parent. We have two that currently, well, actually, I'm not a parent now either. My, I just graduated.
Well, you are a parent, but they graduated.
I mean, we're all parents, but two of, three of us now have had children that have graduated and two have students in the, in the school district. But you don't have, that's not a requirement by any means.
Before we got here, would we have had any opportunity to like show the state like that we have a diverse board? Or is that something that can't?
Other school districts have tried that and they have been unsuccessful. And so that's a route we could take. But in sitting down with council, they have said, if you do that, you will, you will probably go from spending 30 or 40,000 to a minimum of 100 and closer to a million. And, and, and here's, here's the fun part. So let's say we're the one in a million shot, we fight it and we win. In three years' time, they can come back and say, we're going to try this again.
Even now.
And we keep doing it.
They can still do it.
And we keep doing it. And we, so how many times do we fight the fight paying hundreds of thousands of dollars or more?
But I do want to interject here.
Sure.
And pardon me, when we received this demand letter, we did get our attorneys involved and we sent a letter. We requested additional time. It was our goal to go in with cycle 26, year 26. So we did have, would have enough time to communicate with the community and all of that. We requested that. We gave all the information about our historical, you know, backgrounds.
Demographics.
And demographics and everything of governance teams and all of that. We gave all that information. And, and we also said, we're in an interim superintendent situation. We would really like to have our, you know, permanent leader in place to lead us through this process. And I'm telling you, the attorney doubled down. And I have my suspicions on why, but I have no proof, so I can't, you know, say that, but.
Let me add something to that because I feel the community needs to know a little bit more than that. It wasn't just this year that this attorney reached out. So this attorney has reached out back in 2020. And in fact, as a mass reached out to counties across the entire state of California with that same notion. We know the timing of 2020. And we also knew that one of the major reasons why many school districts got a safe harbor from this is because they said, let's wait until we get the results from the 2020 census so we can gather important information. So in 2021, the vast majority of the people that were approached in 2020 started the process to then have in 2020, 2021, to have the elections ready for 2022. So Monrovia did know about this process and what was happening across the state of California. I mean, we do have, I mean, Duarte, Claremont, Glendale, Pasadena, South Pass, Alhambra, Temple City, Roland, San Gabriel, Rosemeade, Azusa, Glendora, Charter Oak, West Covina, El Monte, they all went through that process in 21 or prior to that to be able to do that. So I, I mean, I think it is important that the community knows that this was not something that just happened six weeks ago.
This just came out of the blue though and hard. Back in 2020, when we first received that letter, I was on the board. I don't think you were on the board yet.
No, Tracy and I were not.
We had just gone into lockdown from COVID. And so we asked for additional time. We did put a resolution because that's what other districts were doing. Dr. Terosean was our superintendent then. She kind of talked with the other superintendents and that's what they were going to do to handle it, to give more time to figure things out. Of course, at that time, we thought we were just shutting down for what?
Six weeks, two weeks.
Exactly. It ended up being the rest of that school year into the next school year, even in the spring. I think it was April when we first brought some kids on campus in a hybrid form. And it wasn't till the next school year where we actually were all back on campus. But we all know there were constant outbreaks. There was a lot going on in trying to fix things, provide the supports that were needed. People, kids and staff are still constantly out. We've been in a flux for a while. Then you run into, you run into the situation where there was an outcry of the superintendent. Okay, we now have a new leader. We put a great interim leader in. Flint Furtig has done an amazing job and we knew he was the right person at the right time. There was a lot of relationship building that needed to happen this last year since he's been in place, I think September, October?
September.
Yeah. And that was the focus. The board went out and did listening sessions with every staff member that wanted to participate at every school site, talking from maintenance on up. That was the focus. And so, but our plan, again, talking about it, was let's wait till we get our permanent superintendent in place and let's do it for fiscal year 26, or not fiscal year, election cycle 26. But that didn't happen. Now we're forced to do it for cycle 24.
So moving forward, we've got cycle 24, we're at May right now. Ending this school year, we need.
We have six months.
Yeah.
Actually, even less than that.
This is coming up really fast?
We have about four and a half months to be able to get it all done.
Do we know what that, so that timeline looks like?
We do, they have, there is a timeline.
Yeah, and I, because I don't memorize things.
No, me neither.
So I had to print it out. But we did have an April 17th meeting. That was that first hearing. We had about six people show up. So obviously, we need to do a better job of getting that, you know.
Actually, just to be fair, the April 22nd, we had six people.
Right, our regular board meeting was April 17th.
That was the public hearing.
That was our marathon meeting.
Yes.
Well, one of, one of several.
One of many.
And May 16th is another public forum opportunity. That's on Zoom, it's virtual, and that's being hosted by the firm that we hired to do the demographics and the mapping and everything for us and walk folks through that process. So there's another opportunity.
So that's coming up, May 16th.
May 16th at 10:00 AM.
Zoom, it's virtual.
Yeah.
10:00 AM, people are at work.
Well, but the other ones are in the evening. So we want to make sure we have opportunity for.
Is it going to be recorded and posted?
Well, certainly request that. They're managing it, but definitely, Jason, that's a good point. May 20th, that's a public forum at Monrovia High School in Room 210. That's that large room that they tend to use for public meetings.
Colorado and Madison.
At 6:00 PM, that's an evening one, 6:00 PM, May 20th.
Those are the, those are the two public hearings, just be.
Sorry, those are public forums.
Those are, I'm sorry, public forums that are in which the attorney and the demographer are sharing information to try to collect information.
That's correct.
It's a back and forth with the public. So let's, let's say you sit in and you say, hey, Mr. Demographer, I want to know about, make sure that we protect this community here. This is a community that we value in Monrovia that has similar interests. That's good information for the demographer. So and then, then they would say, okay, well, what are the things that are valuable in our communities in Monrovia? And so it's a give and take and a feedback. It's also an opportunity to ask questions.
Yeah, it's important, I think, for the community to know, and this was shared at both of those, first the board meeting and then at the first public forum, that there are a set of guidelines that goes into taking our school district. Again, this is our school district, not the city of Monrovia. It's a school district which expands much, much further south than the city boundaries into, there's unincorporated Monrovia as well. So there are certain things that need to be taken into consideration is that we are splitting into five, representing the five different trustees and taking a look at the overall population of people in Monrovia. It works out to be about 9900, 9800.
We were told 8800, 8900.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant to say. 8900, right around there is what they're saying, per trustee area or per district.
Correct.
And there can be no more than a 10% variance between district to district.
And 10% variance in population and demographics.
And demographics. Some other things is that it has to be contiguous, meaning that it all needs to be one polygon, if you will.
Like the US versus Hawaii and Alaska, right? Those are the non-contiguous states. So connected to itself.
So it has to be connected, they have to be separated by natural borders like streets, rivers, washes, those things.
So in chopping this up, right, in this whole, in the city and the districts, like, what if there's just more Latin folk in one area, more white folk, more black folk, more Asian folk, like in different areas? Like, does that matter? Is that like?
Yes, it does. And then that's why they will create multiple maps for us. And then on, on May 15th, we will have our regular board meeting. It's a special board meeting, I apologize. Special board meeting. And in that, we will have our third public hearing where the maps will be presented. And at that point, we will look at that, we'll get feedback from the public as well. They will be presented seven, or they're posted seven days before that. And, and then we determine, okay, what does this map mean for our community? What does this map mean? And, and we can gauge what is best suited, what serves our community best of those maps.
So we could potentially be looking at a map where section red is over here and here.
No, that makes it non-contiguous.
Yeah.
Got it. Yeah, that's what, okay, cool. Yep.
So section red is only going to be here.
Yep.
And here's section green, and here's section blue, and I'm just making this up.
It'll be like trustee area one, two, three, four, and five.
And we just hope that it's balanced ethnically and diversity throughout.
That's what the demographers are paid to do.
And one of the things that was really helpful for me as a, as a, you know, constituent, I guess, was to see the study or the demographics.
Right, it was very interesting.
It was.
That came from the 2020 census, which really breaks it all down. They take a look at, they provide some maps of, that are disaggregated by Latino voters, Asian-American voters, African-American voters. It also shows the current school district or school boundaries, which is a whole nother thing, hasn't been touched in decades and needs to be redone.
But as a reminder, this actually doesn't affect us.
It does not, it does not. But I mean, the, I mean, some people, and I've heard a lot of people say, well, why don't you just say, here's the trustee area for Brad Oaks? Here's the trustee area for Mayflower.
Right.
It doesn't work that way because the population doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't pan out legally.
There are a couple more, right. It's, they're not contiguous.
Yep.
Right? They don't match the needed requirements, as you were saying. And then you also have a sense of, well, this is my district and I'm serving the families in Brad Oaks. Well, we are charged with serving all 5,000 of our students.
At all.
At all sites, as well as our staff members, not just those at one school.
It's the difference of being electoral and governance. We are governance.
Yeah.
We just happen to have, will end up in a smaller piece of district.
And I feel very strongly, I can speak for all of us, that we really, really passionately value our governance for the entire district. And so by chopping that up, that would break that up too.
Yeah.[1696.65] Yeah.
And, and while that might not be a legal issue, I think, I think it's a
It changes it.
It does. Yeah. I mean, it is, and it's a new way of doing things. But to Jason's point, we need to do a really great job of getting the word out, not only for these public forum opportunities, but that thereafter, you know?
Correct.
We're moving to this. We're moving to this. You know, these are the districts. We need to do a lot of marketing in that area, outreach and awareness. We're putting something in the city manager's reports as often as we can too, because he's far reaching, right? His, the manager report is far.
And it's outside of just the, the school district. It is the entire community. The other, the other thing we need to make sure we do is, some of that can't be done until the maps are determined, right?
Right. But we're also, but we're also limiting ourselves on the amount of time we have because we are starting this process in April and it has to be to the LA County by August, by, by July. The discussion time that other districts have had to look at maps, I mean, there are some maps, some districts have had dozens and dozens of maps that have been, because the community has provided that. So we're going to be provided with two maps at the first forum. And after that, then we, we're really going to be limited before you guys have the, the, you're forced because of the timing
Right.
To make a decision with not a whole bunch of input
That's true.
To be able to do that. So again, that speaks to the timing thing, which I think connects to the whole communication. I, you say that we need to do a better job. I really hope, like, what are some steps? Like, what specifically are we going to do as a community to reach out to people beyond? The city manager reaches 2,100 people, I think, a week with his city manager's update?
That's it.
That's, that, that's not enough.
So, okay, we know the work that has to happen, but as we get closer to wrapping this up, I want to leave people with like really practical steps to what they do. The timeline we're looking at right now, we're looking at May, June. The demographer is going to have things chopped up by July?
No, the demographer is going to have things chopped up in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
That, May 15th is a special board meeting and the maps will be presented.
May 15th and 22nd.
Yeah. So, so our, our first slice is, is May 15th.
Okay.
And then we will vote on the 22nd. If we don't
Of May?
Of May. If we don't find a map that suits our needs, if we don't feel the community's being served, we have one other opportunity to do that later in May, on the 28th. But that, we may not need it.
This is all fast.
It is fast.
There's also May 20th, Chris, is the, unless the data's changed.
That's the one that M H S that I spoke to earlier.
The virtual one on the 16th, which is a, is a public forum at 10 a.m.
It's already May. I'm thinking it's still
Yeah, we're in May.
I know. No, we're in May.
It's going fast.
It is.
It's spring. It's the, the spring sprintathon to the end. And then there's, May 20th is our third public forum to gather information from the public as well as provide some questioning and answer time.
Got it. Two days later, board votes on yes or no, we don't like this, pushback, say it goes that way.
Might have one more opportunity then after that to
Right.
Do things.
Till
We will have that feedback
Uh huh.
Because the, the forums are between the map presentation on the 15th and the vote on the 22nd.
Okay. Can you tell us where on the district website we can find information around all this process?
Yeah.
Oh, it should be on there, but I haven't looked.
There is. Yeah. There's a big, I don't know what you call it, a floating kind of link, floating header or something that you, that you can click on.
On the district website.
On the district website and including the, the demographics that we share.
Oh, yeah. We did ask that.
The maps, all of those. And then we will also, we're working on a QR code for
Monrovia Days.
Thank you. Monrovia Days. We'll have a booth there with more information as well. That reaches a large group of people
Yeah, that's good.
With a QR code where they can go, they can see the maps. It'll take them to the website. So they can view the maps. They will have been revealed the night before. And then they can also offer feedback.
Okay. Cool. So then after that all happens in June, is that when people then start running or?
Well, it gets packaged up. It gets submitted to the county registrar over at LA County.
Okay.
And then they start the process. But anybody that's interested in running should be really paying attention to see, you know, where they lie in some of these districts. Couple of the districts will, will, where Celine Lockerbie is, where she ends up and where I am, we're not up for reelection. So those two districts will not be open for any new candidates, but three districts.
Until 2026.
Right. Until 26. Exactly.
Right.
So they should start, you know, kind of really paying attention, gearing up. The LA County has their timeline for candidates to throw in their paperwork and all that.
It's about, it's about mid-August.
Yeah.
There's a filing deadline that you have for mid-August and it will be extended five days because there's a chance that the three people that are up might not run again as incumbents. And then they'll open that up if they want to. So there's going to be three districts. That's not going to be the district where you live.
Right.
It's not going to be the district where board member Lockerbie lives.
Correct.
But the rest of Monrovia is, will be, we'll see where the, where the lines
Yeah, we'll see where the lines land.
Lines fall, if you will. Yeah.
If I can have a final thought.
Yeah, please.
That's okay. I know this is rushed. This is not ideal for our community. It's not ideal for us. It's not ideal for staff because they're already spread very thin. We have some critical vacancies right now that they're working on filling, including the superintendent role.
Pretty big role.
Yeah.
Indeed.
We also have Measure MM projects that are really in full swing and the community will start seeing some of the benefit this summer with bigger projects. So when you're a board member, you have a higher level view of things. And to have added this last year at any time would not have been good. It really would have stretched our staff to the point of breaking and we could not do that. So I, we had to consider a lot of different things. Had we known that we would be receiving a demand letter and so heavy like that with no give, then
Right, at the timeline, right? I mean, he, if he was going to send the demand letter, there was the option for him to have served us with that earlier. That did not happen and that put us right up against the, the border.
Okay. So people are going to have to start running, we're looking at August?
That won't change. That's exactly the same.
Yeah, that hasn't changed.
Okay.
That's the reason why this process has to get done before that.
Right.
Because the LA County has to approve the maps that the board approves. And once they do that, then they'll alter the way that you file. So when you, it's called pulling papers for an election. And you pull your papers with the intent to run and then eventually you have to submit it to the secretary of state. But, yeah. So if anybody's out there looking to be, that is somewhat interested, hopefully we'll have some
Yep.
Some outreach from the school district in the community, maybe at that time or before that time.
I'm available anytime, you know, contact me. All of our phone numbers and email addresses are on the Monrovia Unified website. I'll be happy to sit and have coffee with you, let you know what my experience was for running a campaign, what that looked like, tips, you know, anything. The time spent on being on the board, which is a lot more than when I first got on the board.
This, this year is a lot more than
So, you know, happy to talk to anybody.
Well, and also too, shameless plug, go to How to Run for Office. It's a pretty cool show on KGM that is actually an award-winning show now. That'll really explain to you how to run if you want to start looking right now because like everyone has kind of reasoned, we'll need a lot of people running from districts. So pay attention if you know somebody in your neighborhood is like, they should run for school board. Wow, they're so great. They should, get them. Reach out to them. PTSAs in every school, like, I'm talking really at y'all because you're already in it. So
But there's a lot of good people out
100%.
In this community that, you know, please don't think that you have to have that background because other backgrounds are super critical to running.
And the diversity of the background is really helpful. There are lots of times that one of us has a strong background in one area and we rely on the other one for, hey, well, what do you think about this? Or, or how, how does this, you know, impact us? And other times, that's not your strong area and you rely on somebody else. So having that diverse background is really, really critical. We all come from very diverse thoughts and backgrounds and, and ways we look at the world.
Experiences.
And yet we manage to come together because our, our common shared vision is that of the benefit and education of our students and, and the benefit of our staff. So that's, that's the biggest piece, right?
Sure. Makes for a stronger board. Yeah.
It absolutely does, is the ability to remember what's important.
Yeah. Cool.
Well, thank you for the work that you guys do. I mean,
Thank you.
I'm more, I'm, I'm, I, I know how much work that you guys do and how much time you put into it. But, you know, I, I look at it this way. As educators, you're increasing the life chances of our kids.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's worth it.